Oh, good afternoon. Welcome to Grace Trinity. Wednesday afternoon Bible study. It's 2:30 here in Hartford City and I'm Pastor John from Trinity and down the way a little bit is Pastor Jeannie. She was on vacation last week, but she's back and raring to go now, but we're in week six of our Isaiah Bible study. And so there's seven, eight, nine, and 10 after this, and then we'll be done with this study. But I hope you're enjoying it. Do you have anything you'd like to say Pastor?
No, lots of good stuff.
That's for sure. Lots of good stuff. So there will be handouts again today. And if you're somewhere where you would like me to try to get you a handout, you can just respond. I don't, you can call the, call Grace or Trinity and leave a message if no one's there. And we'll try to get the, the handouts to you if you would like. Other than that, let's go ahead and start with prayer and then we'll start our session today. Would anyone like to offer our opening prayer? All right then. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this time together. But we especially thank you for your son and his sacrifice. And as we go through the study of Isaiah, what some people, what some scholars refer to as the fifth gospel, because it talks so much about the coming Messiah, the Messiah that we recognize to have been Jesus the Christ. Lord, we're grateful for that. We're grateful for him coming into the world and we're grateful for you providing all the signs so that the Messiah could be identified. Lord, as we continue our study today, would you open our eyes that we might see and open our ears that we might hear all that you intend us to hear from this section of scripture? And may we continue to grow in our understanding of who you are and what it means to be a follower of Jesus Christ. We pray this in the name of our risen Lord and Savior, Jesus the Christ. Amen. Well, chapter six is where we started today or week six, I guess, and that starts on page 61. And we're going to talk about Hezekiah today. And she's going to mention it in the videos and she mentioned it in the reading already that this section in the book of Isaiah is a contrast between Ahaz and Hezekiah. How when they faced similar situations, being conquered by external forces, one relied on himself and one relied on God. And the outcomes were drastically different. And I don't know if you noticed, but there's kind of a lesson in that for us, that sometimes we tend to seek first our own understanding and seek first our own will. And then after we've made enough of a mess, then we turn to God and we say, God, can you help me here? And so Ahaz never did seek the help of the Lord. In fact, he didn't even pay attention to Isaiah when Isaiah told him what he should be doing. Had no interest in hearing. And so we can deaden our ears to God so that we don't hear what he's speaking to. So there's certainly some lessons for us. And today especially, well, be last week and today, last week we talked about the Assyrians and Ahaz. And this week we're going to talk about Sinakareb and Hezekiah. So, and if you don't like how I say Sinakareb, I'll probably say it six different ways today. So maybe one of you, one of them will satisfy you more, but it is, there are lots of fun pronunciations as we go through scripture today. So fair warning. So anyway, if you go to page 61, it talks about Hezekiah and how Hezekiah was different. And Hezekiah was different because he listened to God and he tried to do what God wanted him to do. And so it says that the early years of his reign are marked by economic success, rapid demographic growth, patronage of the arts, and then exceptional alliance with the priesthood resulting in unprecedented religious reform. And then what's interesting here, and it's something that we should be aware of when we're looking at Isaiah, that a lot of what we read about the kings comes from two other sources. And those are First and Second Kings and First and Second Chronicles. And so First and Second Kings and First and Second Chronicles seem to have a lot of the same information. The Chronicles was written after the nation of Israel, after the southern kingdom returned from exile. And it was to provide them with, because they didn't know a lot of their history. And so it was to provide them kind of a footnote version or a a reduced version of the history of the nation of Israel and especially their relationship with God. So you'll see a lot of times when you're in these sections and you're reading how there's references from both kings and chronicles where what Isaiah is talking about is backed up in those other two sources. And so Hezekiah is given the highest commendation by the historians. Isaiah depicts him as a righteous foil of Ahaz, one contrasted against the other. Hezekiah is portrayed throughout the Bible as a reformer and a hero, a portrait that comes to us animated by more material culture than any other single event in biblical history. So there's a lot of writing about Hezekiah. And between the kings, the chronicles and what Isaiah is saying, and then references in the New Testament as well. And so if you turn to page 62, you see your little bookie. You see the chart there and we're over there in 36 to 39. That's chapter 36 to 39 in the book of Isaiah. And it says, Hezekiah, an almost faithful king. And then it talks about some of the things that happened that Hezekiah, Sinakareb, and Isaiah, Hezekiah temporary and Israel's temporary creed, and then Hezekiah's foolishness and Babylon is coming. And so we're just in chapter 36 and 37 this week. But we'll look at Hezekiah's downfall a little bit more next week. So are there any questions about what we talked about so far?
Hezekiah is over Judah.
Hezekiah is the king of the southern region, Judah. Yes. Yep. So primarily the tribe of Judah and some Benjamites and I always think of Lucy when I say Benjamine. I'd eventuate them and Lucille Ball and one of her TV shows. But the southern kingdom, which is primarily made up of the Judas, Judaites.
Because and when you read kings, I mean, that's a, you know, there's several kings that are not faithful at all, following God. And then almost every other one is almost faithful. They follow some, but not everything. And that it's a reminder for us to make sure we're not almost faithful, that we're trying to follow everything, as well as the opportunity that we have too, that we can be, we go before, when we make a mistake, go before like, I need forgiving, Lord, please forgive me. And then we are. So we don't have to hold on to those mistakes. No, but yeah, so many of the kings were.
A lot of times the phrasing is for the kings that didn't follow God. They did what was evil in the side of the Lord or something like that. And then for the rare king, every once in a while, they would say, he did what was right in the eyes of the Lord, but he did not. And then it mentions what, where he fell short. Yes, sir.
Well, since we're talking a bit about Ahaz and his bad choice, I found it interesting that God asked him through Isaiah to ask for a sign. And he didn't do that. Well, that's kind of a question of God's reasons for what he does too much. When I get to Jesus, I go, oh, you people, you ask for a sign. You ask, every time I turn around, you want a sign. You wouldn't believe it if I gave you one. So I've had kind of a sort of courtesy to avoid asking for signs from God. Because then you get into trouble. Was that really a sign from God?
Well, you end up like Gideon where, you know, okay, well, maybe it was just a coincidence today when the fleece was wet and the ground was dry.
Yeah, he struggled with it, but still it was from God.
Right.
And either way, it's, it's a good thing. Then it gets to the test. No, that's, it's not a good thing. So I guess I'm going to believe it is that if God wants to do that, that's, that's his business. I just thought it was interesting that you tend to expect something, you know? Like when I was in school, what does the professor want me to say? So I fit the grade. That God is not manipulative. I just thought that was interesting. It turned out that way. It just seemed, the other thing we'll get to later is I, I'm linear, I mixed this number of times. I think from here to here to here to here. And as we're going into the study, I will get back to it pretty soon. But I get lost. You know, Isaiah is the prophet. He said, this is going to happen, this and this and this and this. You know, there's going to be bad times and there's going to be a savior who's born and then it's going to be wonderful. But it doesn't work out that way. All of a sudden he jumps back and talks about the Assyrians. And here's what's going to happen. So I was already in today's time, you know, past. And then the way God acted then was he sent an angel. And it sounds I'm not sure, did he kill 85,000 people, single-handedly? So I guess the part of real life application and what we should do when we're faced with a crisis like, you know, a real power threatening to take us? And of course, we're taught to pray. That's part of the, you know, the difference between the two. He hasn't got to be in a prayer. That'd be quite a sign if an angel came and killed 85,000, I don't name the country, enemy over the sea. Are we supposed to pray for that?
Well, I think sometimes all we can pray for is God's will be done and recognized if we don't understand.
Yeah, that's about where my prayers, we end up a lot of times. I'd love to commentary on that.
Yeah, your first part about, you know, as far as like, you know, God, I want this, I want a sign. I think motive is one of the things behind lots of prayer requests. Kind of, you know, is our motive just like, I want, you know, people to notice me or I want, you know, God to notice me or, or is it, I want to notice God, you know? So I think motive sometimes about that would be the better determination if it's, if we should ask God for different things. And then the, the other part too, again, when we had different prophecies, yeah, you know, there may be a line or two talking about Messiah being born. And then there's all kinds of, and I was like, so how do we make sure we pick that up, you know? And then again, we know it came, it happened that Jesus was born in the virgin birth and, you know, we know that. But yeah, sometimes there's so much else around there that didn't tie quick, you know, quite in with the Messiah and, and what's that? But it is a prophecy. So yes, it's a struggle.
Movie, you know, they go, also you're back here.
Yeah.
Back there. Which also I still wonder about, you know, who's the prophet? And she talks about that. I mean, honestly, the question.
On the servant.
Well, no, what's a real prophet? Even the point is, do we have prophets today like unto Isaiah? Now there's an organization where prophecy is expected from the church in general. And we all know, but you know, if the prophet's true, his prophecy's come true. So you gotta, you know, give them some sign to hang themselves. I'm trying to see how this is going to work out. And I read one last week where this prophet said, this is going to happen, like Joe Biden and what's your name?
Johnson.
Kamala Harris.
Kamala. We got this Kami in our family. I go, Kamala, won't be on the ticket this next time around. And then he, and then he said, well, maybe not. I'm waiting to see what's going to be fulfilled. So is he a prophet or not? Well, and he's already hedging his bets. Well, maybe not. So I'm kind of antsy when somebody said, I, the Lord spoke to me. Listen, this is the way it is.
And in the Old Testament too, so much of this, I mean, there are thousands and thousands and thousands. You know, when they talk about all the different people, but then also that, that they kill. You know, that they take their life, you know, and it's just like, whoa, you know?
Really?
We as a church, we as a country, we couldn't, I mean, kill thousands and say that was right, but, but it is, you know, I mean, that's what they were told to do. Or again, it is a, a thing to deal with too, of trying to understand when they did go to different places and, you know, and and God told them, kill everybody, every man, woman, and child, and every animal, you know, don't, you know, there are times that it's like wipe out everything.
Was this when he was trying to get their land, their inheritance? And I've been reading this because I'm reading the Bible and I just, that's just blows my mind. I go, so in killing those people, are they evil, bad? Is that why? I can't understand killing them so you can get the land. But then what are they doing now?
Well, they might not hurt you on land. Yeah, but as well as there are different religions that again, if you don't, you know, it's difficult to try to oppress them. But if you didn't take them out, they would be worshiping and they would, again, as we heard another time too, though, all these men were married women, then then, you know, they started worshiping those gods.
Yeah, that's why.
So they made the mistakes of, you know, that if you took it all away, that because they weren't following God, they weren't right. But yeah, it's still kind of a difficult thing to understand. Again, I don't think we're going to be told that now to wipe out unbelievers, you know, atheists or, but, but try to see what God's plan is even now listening, what is God's plan for us?
Assuming there's a good reason for doing that.
Yeah.
Assuming there is. Okay. How do we accomplish? Well, do we depend on our, what, five branches of military to intervene and save us? Or do we appeal to one, our angel will come in and do it? We kind of hedged your bets. Yeah, we believe in angels, but sure good to have, I mean, Air Force, Marines, and Coast Guard backing us up.
And we could probably make a case that during World War II that the army was doing, the, the allied forces were doing God's will because of what was going on with his chosen people in Germany.
The Just War.
Yeah.
Argument.
Yeah. Okay. We don't have all the answers yet.
Nope. Okay, so on page 63, she makes a case that none was left except the tribe of Judah. And that's because the northern kingdom had been decimated by the Assyrian expansion, and they were destroyed in 722 B.C. Many carried off into captivity, some just killed. Some left there to interbreed with others who were settled into the area. And so by, by 722 B.C., it was just the tribe of Judah essentially that was left. And that was the southern kingdom of Judah and Hezekiah was the king of that kingdom. And in some ways, though, they were still subject to Assyria. And so we're going to see what happens now between Hezekiah and Sinakareb. Is there any thing anyone else wants to discuss? I'm going to pass out your quiz. And I'd invite you to answer all the questions and then we'll watch the video to see if you got your answers right. I'm just kidding. I know you are. And I would invite your attention, there's a bonus handout at the back. And it was spurred by someone, a question that was asked last week. Like someone in the evening Bible study. And so it's kind of a history of the city of Jerusalem and who was in control of it throughout the years. And so I was amazed that I got most of them right, but I did not call the Persians, Persians, I called them Babylonians. But it just kind of gives you a little bit of overview. Because he asked the question, well, when did Rome come into play? And Rome doesn't even come into play really until 63 B.C. when the Roman general Pompey conquered Jerusalem and its surroundings. So that's just kind of for your information, if you want to, want to look at that and see what's been going on. Because it's probably one of those spots in the world that's been fought over more times than just about anywhere else.
We watched the video, let's pray. So I got a text from Rita. So she's with Max's daughter. They found that, that he's too weak for his surgery that was scheduled for tomorrow. And there's other complications and so he won't recover from those. So, and he's going to be moved to Bethel Point with hospice. So let's pray for him and his family. Gracious God, we thank you for the ways that you work. And in very difficult times, we turn to you that you were there for us and for the family. You are grateful that you continue to be with them. So be with Rita and Alan, be with Max and all his family. May they know that you were there with them. His daughter Terry, may she know that you love her so much and that you love Max as well. And he come to know you, even through this difficult time, that you were there and that you care about them, you created them and that you will be with them. So help him to know you, Lord. We truly pray that there are others that continue to share the love and grace of Jesus Christ with Max and all the family. Be with Alan and Rita and give them a peace and strength. May they know that you were there. And so we just lift them all up to you, Lord. There are many ways that they can come to know you. And so we just ask your peace and your strength. And we ask your grace just pour out upon Max and all his family. So they know you, may they come to know you in a powerful way. So we just lift this up in Jesus' name. Amen. Did this the short video or?
About 30 minutes. As I recall. I just have to figure out how.
We got the first blank. We're ready. He was the almost.
We supposed to put almost in there?
Almost available there.
Okay, she's must be going to tell us about, say more. Say more.
I don't know about done, but I need to have it rewound to get back on. Exactly, I think I know what she was wanting in those, fill in the blank there. We missed it, I missed it.
I'm with you.
Got it. I didn't get it. A little further back. Ron's probably got it all, so.
Which one were you looking for?
The perfect picture of the blending of is it biblical and archeology or?
Yes, biblical and archaeological discipline. So archaeological. And then pre eyewitness and post. And then epigraphic and archaeological or archaeological and epigraphic.
Are you spilling out?
Epigraphic, E P I G R A P H I C.
Okay, so Isaiah was what?
Isaiah was the eyewitness account. So if you want to look on your map, it's the one that's entitled Senachorib's something or other, I forget what word. Senachorib's campaign. Is the map that she's showing you.
How you spell that word?
Uh, S E N N A C H E R I V.
Doesn't look like it's Sam or.
I don't know what it looks like and I don't know what it sounds like, so. Did you get those at the top of the page? So secure as water source. And refortify as capital city. Refortify Lachish. And stockpile food.
And what was Lachish where?
Lachish is uh, the second largest city in Israel at the time and it's between Jerusalem and the Mediterranean.
On this line. So they said their project, where to do it? And to which law did they do it? And in a large building. Comes free to the right side, from two hundred and fifty. And now that we've done that, that sugar and alcohol have dragged off the slavery, we have got to do this. And so it's a lot. They have so much.
Can you please tell us one question? When I hear the voice that's in front of me, and it's not Yes. So that So when I hear it, when you are in the land of fire, fire This is a great time for glory. But yes, these are all wonderful things. I guess. And And that keeps the tail of I just can't not just hold on to people. They certainly told us that as well. And it's an act of I'm thinking of first one. For specifically And I think that's like what was copied from any kind of trip place, but also from King of And I call more well, God is about such a and how string they heard this one and so all that. And of course, he's and then clearly good air and then Now for this cup you know, I think what is this a beautiful five words? What we keep in mind? First, there was a family very hard time. So I over the sound of that which was about in so I thought you were just like I I thought I thought I also she was of my
Kind of humble.
You can kind of want to just want to support but why yeah? The first chance as I learned from in a little for you don't then I really could say they just can go ahead. And so I would try this much thing. I see that to the last one on page. Well, because the last first person is connected on my And so please if you stop or you ever when you should have put back and come to my house and I I know really struggling this I'm checking putting it in the and then I'm glad it's true. Oh, that's that's to the higher of because I fail. So they did not speak and and so I tried to I tried to come together. And it was then for all that but the can do and as a result, this seems the most of his life. So we close down this the people who take questions. It's exciting. Because it's very we have not um we didn't let it come. Um and hopefully that now I'm saying that always says I'm when it comes to and so I think that very very thirty years I have immediately because I'm coming in the kingdom of Israel. Then I it's I don't know. And think about the way over time. My children say I was here for eight months. Always I was born in the same day. But they were certainly one of myself born. They have the voice already. And then was top after all, there's no country which they doesn't kill all I think and there was um I think you know, to um what is I can tell that is that I can just type of I don't I don't to thank you among Yahweh. You are God. Since I'm I thank you for this time I thank you for you like to those every day of you come and just I you know we I know we I like and you please.
And astounded. Did you hear what I heard? She said she didn't care why he left. Hmm. Well, I know why he left. Eighty-five thousand of them dead. Come on.
That's enough to scare him to go home, huh?
But why did she not? Hmm.
Eighty-five thousand?
Sounds like a lot compared to taking over.
I think she said, I don't care why. I don't know. Don't know.
I have to read more and think more, so. And I had to fill in the blanks too, so John will have to help us do that, but the one of the things I heard again, you can hear things you have questions about and things we a hint of hope leads us to future so that God gave the hint of hope and still does and can lead us to the future that God has for us. So making sure we're listening to God. Um. So and under the archaeological evidence, what is the blank for to the king?
Along.
What's it?
The lema like jars belong to the king.
Along. Okay. Where are we?
Yeah.
That's the
Oh.
At the top archaeological evidence. So it shouldn't have been water. S- secure as water source, re fortified the capital city, re fortified Lashit, Lakish, stockpile food, and then the bottom right block. Lema like jars belong to the king. That's what was on the inscription on each one of them.
Where are we?
The top.
Of the squares.
Oh, up here?
Yeah.
Okay, water, capital.
Mm hmm.
And that long word.
Lakish.
Okay.
Food.
Okay.
And then on the other side.
In the bottom block, the lema like jars belong to the king.
Me long.
Hmm.
Okay.
And then Sinakarab comes from Lake Ish to Jerusalem and marks Hezekiah for his faith in Yahweh.
I could trust in Yahweh.
Yeah, I've, um, I heard focus and trust, so yeah, faith are, they're all similar to.
Hezekiah follows God and his prophet. Yahweh brings victory or provides. Sinakarab's account of his campaign on the Taylor Prism names Hezekiah.
A little slower. It's just like we're writing it in Excel. I don't have all of them in there. Thank you.
Names Hezekiah does not claim victory over Jerusalem. As for Hezekiah, the Judean. I besieged forty-six of his fortified cities and surrounding smaller towns, which were without number. He himself I locked up within.
Jerusalem.
Yeah, they, they, that doesn't really. Oh, well, it could be Jerusalem, his royal city. I did.
He went to the temple in Jerusalem, wasn't it?
It was my first thought. Temple, yeah.
Locked up in temple or its palace, maybe.
Well, it might be two different places.
Yeah.
Locked up within Jerusalem, his royal city. So Jer- it's, it's his royal city, so it's gotta be Jerusalem. Like a bird in a cage. He, Hezekiah was overwhelmed by the awesome splendor of my lordship. Boy, what a humble man. I guess when you're a king, though.
Well, you went to the right place, to God.
All right, so I have a blank next. They have blank from the superpower, the ancient Near East.
Been delivered?
They have been delivered. I like, yeah, thank you. Delivered. This is the story of a king who chose to believe. And it's
Dare.
I put dare.
Dare.
Same idea.
Dare to believe and as a result, receive the blessing
Of his God.
Of his God. Thanks. Some of those are probably right.
Now, on the first page, I don't have anything under Assyria or Judah.
Okay, so seven oh five BCE, King Sargon II did not die since Sinakarab inherits the throne. Region wide rebellion against Assyria happened. That's where she was talking about how everybody rebelled at once, thinking one of them would probably be able to survive. And then Sinakarab begins his campaign against the region. I don't know if region is exactly right or not.
I put Babylonians.
That's what I put.
Oh, begins, yeah, that makes sense. Begins his campaign against the Babylonians. You're right.
It said east.
Right, to the east.
Yeah, west first and west.
Right. To protect his capital city. Hezekiah rebels and makes preparations for war, specifically siege.
What was the one for the treasure trove?
Archaeological and epigraphic.
Okay.
Yeah.
Where's that at?
Up above Assyria thing.
Right above in Assyria, a treasure trove of biblical, well, I put biblical first, but epigraphic is, she said that was things carved into stone. Epigraphic and archaeological evidence.
Yeah, and some of the other ones, she had exactly up there.
Yeah.
She talks so fast, I can't write.
She does. And, and as I said on the, the images, it's great information. So too, but we need to see the images longer.
You can tell she
This time the, the, the phrases weren't up there as much either, so.
You can tell she's a college professor because she talks fast and doesn't really seem to care whether you get it or not. Of course, she's recorded, so we can go back and watch it over. All right, so day one. This is on page sixty-four, Jerusalem surrounded in Ma. And we were to receive, read Isaiah thirty-six. Do we want to read Isaiah thirty-six?
Okay.
Chapter thirty-six?
Yep, Isaiah chapter thirty-six.
They'll have it on the screen too.
I hope so.
We do have to watch the time too.
Yeah. And so this is from the ESP, the same Bible that Ron has there. And a lot of bibles, and this is one of them, provides the other sources, like in the New Testament. If things are in more than one gospel, they provide where you would find it in the other gospels. Here they tell you where you'd find them in Second Kings or in Second Chronicles. So that's just something about this Bible. So I'll start because this one's easy. In the fourteenth year of King Hezekiah's reign, Sinakarab, king of Assyria, attacked all the fortified cities of Judah and captured them.
And the king of Assyria sent his field commander with a large army from Lachish to King Hezekiah at Jerusalem. And the commander stopped at the aqueduct of the upper pool on the road to Wanderer's Field. Eliakim, the son of Hilkai, the palace administrator, Shabna, the secretary, and Joel, son of Asaph, the recorder, went out to him.
And the field commander said to them, tell Hezekiah, that this is what the great king, the king of Assyria says. Oh, what are you basing this competence of yours? You say you have counsel and might for war, but you speak only empty words. Oh, whom are you depending that you rebel against me?
Look, I know you are depending on Egypt, that splintered breed of a staff, which pierces the hand of anyone who leans on it, such as favorable king of Egypt to all who depend on him.
So put down.
Yeah.
But if you say to me, we are depending on the Lord our God, isn't he the one whose high places and altars Hezekiah removed? Saying to Judah and Jerusalem, you must worship before this altar.
Come now, make a bargain with my master, the king of Assyria. I will give you two thousand horses if you can put riders on them. How then can you repulse one officer of the least of my master's officials, even though you are depending on Egypt for chariots and horsemen?
Can you imagine two thousand horses? But I mean, this size sometimes is just
I think he's trying to lure them to take something and they've had, oh, yeah.
Furthermore, I have come to attack and destroy this land without the Lord. The Lord himself told me to march against this country and destroy it.
Hey.
You're gonna have to help me with these words.
Eliakim.
Okay, and
Shabna.
Jonah said to the field commander, please speak to your servants in Aramaic. Since we understand it, don't speak to us in Hebrew in the hearing of the people on the wall.
So why is this that he's, why really do they want him to speak in Aramaic rather than Hebrew?
So they don't understand what they're saying?
Right, so the people on the walls, the regular soldiers and stuff, don't recog- recognize what's going on. Keeping the
But the commander replied, was it only to your master and you that my master sent me to say these things? And not to the people sitting on the wall? Who, like you, will have to eat their own excrement and drink their own urine?
Had a very promising thing, but that, they're talking about siege, and that's why Hezekiah was preparing for siege because food would be scarce and water too. So those are two of the things that Hezekiah worked to make sure they had some.
Then the commander stood and called out in Hebrew, hear the words of the great king, the king of Assyria. This is what the king says. Do not let Hezekiah deceive you. He cannot deliver you. Do not let Hezekiah persuade you to trust in the Lord when he says, the Lord will surely deliver us. This city will not be given into the land of the king of Assyria.
Do not listen to Hezekiah. This is what the king of Assyria says. Make peace with me and come out to me. Then each of you will eat fruit from your own vine and fig tree and drink water from your own sister. Until I come and take you to a land like your own, a land of grain and new wine, a land of bread and vineyards. Sounds like a land flowing with milk and honey.
Yeah.
He's trying to make it sound pleasant.
Mm hmm.
Trust me.
Trust him instead of Hezekiah.
Yeah, trust him instead of God. Yeah.
Yeah.
Do not let Hezekiah mislead you when he says the Lord will deliver us. Have the gods of any nations ever delivered their la- their lands from the hand of the king of Assyria? Where are the gods of Heman and Ar- Arpad? Where are the gods of, I'll think, Zepharim? Have they rescued Samaria from my hand?
Who of all the gods of these countries have been able to save their lands from me? How they can- how then can the Lord deliver Jerusalem from my hand?
But the people remained silent and said nothing in reply because the king had commanded, do not answer him. Then Eli- how do you pronounce it?
Eliakim.
Son of Hilkam.
Hilkai.
Hilkai. The palace administrator, Shabna, the secretary, and Joel, son of Es- the recorder went to Hezekiah with their clothes torn and told him what the field commander had said.
He was knocking down the barriers, wasn't he?
Yeah.
Assyria. I've got the better way. I'm taking over.
Telling them everything their itching ears wanted to hear.
Maybe that would happen, maybe not. Once they gave up, well, you don't know what's gonna happen.
So then we had questions on page sixty-four at the bottom, and at this point, what cities had Sinakarab, Sinakarab? That guy captured, and where is his army headed? So they had captured all the fortified cities of Jerusalem, and they were on their way toward Judah, and they had also could captured unfortified cities beyond Cal. So basically all of Judea except for Jerusalem, it seems like. And then in verses four and thirteen, by what title is the king of Assyria called?
I wrote down great king.
Great king. Yep, that's what I wrote too. To whom is Rabchakah, the chief cupbearer, speaking in verse four through ten? Who's he's to whom is the who's he speaking to?
Officials to King Hezekiah.
Right, Hezekiah, Eliakim, Eli, however, palace administrator Shabna, the secretary, and Joel, somebody's son. What do Eliakim, Shabna, and Joel request of Rabeska?
Speak in Aramaic.
Yep, speak in Aramaic. Because they don't understand Hebrew. That doesn't even seem to make a lot of sense, does it? But
Who doesn't understand Hebrew?
They're saying that they, those three do not understand Hebrew. Or they're saying that the people on the walls don't understand Hebrew.
The old old language, Aramaic was like an A Greek.
Right.
It's a common peoples.
Right.
Language.
So which language did he want them to speak?
Common people knew. They, they, they went and learned in the old, old language of Hebrew. They wanted Aramaic.
So why didn't Hezekiah want them to speak Aramaic? And Assyrians wanted to speak Hebrew, so they're like, yeah. That's the way it was? They said, don't speak Hebrew, speak Aramaic? Did I read that right?
Well, I thought that the cabinet, these officials, wanted him them being all these foreigners to speak in Aramaics, in Aramaic. So that the soldiers and the common people could understand as well.
Mm hmm.
Then the three officials from Hezekiah said, please speak to your servants in Aramaic since we understand it. Don't speak to us in Hebrew in the hearing of the people on the wall.
So maybe the cabinet didn't want the soldiers to hear it because that is scary.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that, that would be my take on it, that they were trying to prevent. And maybe they, to keep them from being afraid. Maybe if they were going to make a deal that would protect the king at the people's expense.
Yeah, okay, that's the flip side. I don't, don't frighten my soldiers.
Right, don't frighten my soldiers is a good one too. But the the official from Gre, or from Assyria responded, but the commander, was it only to your master and you that my master sent me to say these things? And not to the people sitting on the wall, who like you will have to eat their own? So he thinks that they should continue to speak in Hebrew, so everybody hears.
Proceeds. Please, uh, at
Yeah, Halilah's board meetings.
Yeah, right.
Where they were from.
Right. So
Keep the, keep the people in the dark because be your foreign language.
Well, I, I think that's what the officials wanted to happen, keep the people in the dark.
Right.
And the, the guy from Assyria wanted everyone to know the threats that were being made.
Hmm.
Okay. But we are running out of time because there's another meeting in here at four o'clock. So we had two other lessons this week. Did anyone want to discuss anything from those two lessons? Or anything else that was in?
Yeah, on sixty-seven and sixty-eight, I think it is good to look at the scripture and compare Ahaz and, and Hezekiah to from Isaiah seven, Ahaz and then Hezekiah. So that's good for us to write out
Yeah.
what happens there.
Right, because one is faithful and one isn't.
Hmm.
And one has really bad outcome and one doesn't yet have a bad outcome, but it's coming.
And then on page seventy-one, um, why does Hezekiah think that Yahweh is different? Why does Hezekiah want Yahweh to deliver Judah? I think those are good questions for us to look at the scriptures and and also apply that then to us. For follower of God, what, why is Yahweh different?
How is God different than all the gods? She talks about this in the readings, um.